Good morning, everyone, and happy Fourth of July. We're going to call the meeting of the Carson City Board of Supervisors and the Carson City Liquor and Entertainment Board to order. Today is Thursday, July 3rd, 2014. It is just 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street. Alan, can we get a roll call for our record, please?
Supervisor Aboud, Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor McKenna, Supervisor Shirk, Mayor Kroll. Do you have a quorum present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Alan. Could we call on our good friend Ken Haskins of the First Christian Church to get us started on the right foot this morning? I see you've got somebody there with you.
Yes, I do.
I think you ought to introduce her.
I'm getting this off right now. You know, I usually have that off before I-
You ought to introduce who you've got with you, too, so-
Come right on up here, young lady. This is my granddaughter, Ariana. She's one of our five grandkids. Unfortunately, four of them live in Colorado, but this one lives out here, so we get to see her a lot. And she loves Carson City, don't you? She's taking ballet and tap, and now she's got swim lessons. So, man, she's involved.
She's involved.
Yeah. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this great nation. And we celebrate 238 years since our independence was declared. And on this continent, a new nation was formed, and as our late, great President Lincoln said, conceived in liberty. And we are thankful for our liberty and our freedom, and the way that you blessed our nation. We just ask, Lord, you continue to do so. Continue to point the way for us. And we thank you for this community, and for these that commit their time and their service to hearing the issues and wrestling with them and making good decisions. And I ask, Lord, you grant them wisdom and knowledge so that they would make good decisions on behalf of all who live here, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Karen. Supervisor Shirk, Jim, would you lead us to the pledge of allegiance?
On this Fourth of July, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're now on item number five, public comment. This is the time to discuss comment. Any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of either the Board of Supervisors or the Liquor and Entertainment Board. We have public comment as we go throughout the day. We also have public comment at the end. Anybody want to bring up anything right now? Okay, I don't see any. Okay, then we'll move to item six, the minutes of April 3rd, 2014. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? If so, the motion's in order. Somebody wants to make a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of April 3rd, 2014, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bonkowski, second by Supervisor Aboud on the minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. On the agenda, City Manager, I understand we want to pull item 21, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anything else that I missed?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Any board members, we okay with the agenda as published? Okay. All right, then, unless there's an objection, we will take the agenda as we just, as published, with the exception of item 21, which will appear at the next agenda or the next time it comes up. Could I ask Carl Lackey? Where's Carl? Come on up, Carl. Let's go to the podium here. This is the bear guy.
Good morning, Carl. How you doing?
Good morning.
Good to see you. Thanks for being here. This looks... How's that? All right. I want to read a proclamation. This is Bear Logic Month, and it reads as follows. Whereas the American black bear, the Ursus americana, is the only bear species occurring naturally in Nevada, and in Carson City, they are primarily found west of 395. And whereas the Nevada Department of Wildlife reports an increase in human-bear conflicts in the last few years due to an increase in people living in bear habitat, dry climate conditions, and access to non-native food sources such as garbage. And whereas when bears have access to human food sources, they may become conditioned to human food and habituated to people which may embolden their behavior, causing them to rummage through unsecured garbage bins or even enter residences seeking human food. And whereas the Nevada Department of Wildlife is recognized as taking a lead, proactive role in non-lethal bear management to solve human-bear conflicts with the use of, I think that's called Carillion?
Coralian.
Corillion, bear dogs, Corillion, bear dogs, and adversive conditioning. We read about that recently here. Good job. And whereas it is the responsibility of all Nevadans to not feed wildlife, to properly secure their garbage and pet food, and to remove attractants whether at home or camping. And whereas Carson City encourages all residents and tourists who live or play in bear habitat to maintain a safe distance and never approach or feed a bear, and to practice Bear Logic habits, including use of wildlife-resistant containers. Now, therefore, I Robert L. Kroll, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim the month of July as Bear Logic Month in Carson City, and present this to Mr. Lackey, who is known as in Nevada and around here as the Bear Guy. And we would ask you to say a few words, and also, we want to thank you for what you do. I know it's not easy doing it, and I know you run into a lot of different things besides bears.
That I know.
Come on, okay. Oh, picture.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor and members of the board, we really appreciate you guys taking the time to do this and to read it. Of course, the issue is bears having access to human trash. And Endow really appreciates the effort to bring that issue to the attention of the citizens of Carson City. The more we do this, you know, we're slowly getting a handle on this whole issue over the last several years. All three counties now, including Carson, Douglas, and Washoe, have ordinances to some degree regarding this issue. So, we really do appreciate it. I've been asked real briefly about Bear Logic and what that means. And Bear Logic, think like a bear. Basically, we're just asking people to put themselves in the perspective of the bear and look at their property in the perspective of bear, and they'll get better at recognizing things that may be an attractant to bears and other wildlife, and they'll get better at removing those attractants and helping us solve these conflicts before they escalate, so.
You know, Carl, one, again, we want to thank you for what you do, because I know you're involved in a lot of different things. You know, we see a lot of deer in town, which, you know, is good, and sometimes they eat the trees and things like that. But also, you know, there are other wild animals that we should be aware of, like bobcats or mountain lions. Are they... Do we have those around here?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, I want to talk about it a little bit.
Well, bobcats and mountain lions and bears, you know, what we see is as these neighborhoods, West Carson City neighborhoods like that, that are kind of built up into that historic habitat for mule deer especially, as those neighborhoods mature and more and more thick brush, thick shrubs, as those trees and things that people have planted mature, we see an increase in the use of wildlife, or wildlife using those areas. We've had, did some research with UNR and the Wildlife Conservation Society on cougars, and several of those collared cougars using West Carson City and some of those areas as part of their home range. Very rarely seen, but those animals are there at, really, at any given time. Mountain lions right in people's backyards, and we're the only ones that knew it, for the most part.
So, Carl, could you give us a little primer on what happens if you're out on the hills up here, or you run into a mountain lion, or a cougar, or a bear? What should you do? I mean, is the same thing for all the animals, or is it different techniques for the different animals?
Well, it really depends on what the animal is doing. If a bear, a lion sees you and is looking at you and maybe approaching you, then you need to do something different. You know, you need to make yourself look big, back away from the animal, say something, let it know that you're a person. If the animal doesn't see you and you see a bear or a cougar from a distance, enjoy the experience, maybe get some pictures and enjoy it, and kind of walk around it, something like that.
Thanks. Everybody okay? All right, thanks again, Carl.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll now recess as the Board of Supervisors, and we'll reconvene as Liquor and Entertainment Board. In lieu of a roll call, I'll just reference the fact that, I think the sheriff is here.
Is he?
He is.
We have all the Board of Supervisors, and the sheriff will wait for a minute here until he gets in here, so. We have the sheriff present, so for the record, there is, everyone who's on the Liquor and Entertainment Board is here. We'll move to item number 11, public comment for the Liquor and Entertainment Board. Seeing none, we'll now take up item 12, which is the March 20th and April 3rd minutes. Everybody had a chance to look at those minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take each one separately.
Good, thank you very much.
I move to approve the minutes for the Carson City Liquor and Entertainment Board for March 20th, 2014, as published.
Motion by Supervisor Aboud, second by Supervisor Bonkowski. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you very much.
And I move to approve the Carson City Liquor and Entertainment Board minutes for April 3rd, 2014, as published.
Motion by Supervisor Aboud, second by Supervisor McKenna. On the motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Supervisor. All right. Let's now take up item 13. This is the business license issue for Living the Good Life LLC. Ms. Resick, you going to take it, or is the sheriff going to do it? You going to do it?
This item is for possible action to approve Gina's, the liquor manager, for Living the Good Life LLC, doing business as the Good Life Liquor License Number 15-30040, located at 1480 North Carson Street. She is applying for a dining room with hard liquor license. The applicant has met the code requirements for approval, the business license code requirements for approval.
And the staff recommendation is what?
Business license staff recommendation is approval. She's met all the code requirements that we require.
Is she here, Gina? Come on up, please. How are you doing this morning?
Hi, nice. Very good, thank you.
Good. Give us your name, please, for the record.
Gina Louise Rohr.
Very good. Why don't you tell us a little bit about what you're doing, where you're going to do it, and kind of what your business plan is for monitoring alcohol issues related to minors, and the fact that we should not be encouraging or serving alcohol to minors.
Absolutely not.
Go ahead and tell us a little bit about it.
Well, I've been in the business 37 years. My father and myself have been involved, well, I was very little, but we've had 18 establishments. I'm very well-versed in alcohol and its effects. I'm also very well-versed in my clientele. I have a very high standard for my clientele and their behavior. I will not tolerate anything that would prove to be unsavory for my business or my clientele within my business. I am very much into levity in my businesses. And so, people that get happy, people that get, you know, jovial, that's wonderful. People that get unruly, or unkind, or, I don't know, outspoken, I have the right to refuse service in this town, and I would invoke that right at any time for any type of that behavior, because I don't tolerate it. I'm a lady, and the people that I am wishing to come through my doors are ladies and gentlemen. And my rules are, you have to be a lady and a gentleman, and you have to be nice. And that's how I run a business. That's how my father's run his businesses. We've been very successful over the years, except for, of course, when the building was sold out from under us here in town. But we are very successful there, and I love Carson City, and I love its, I just love its quaintness, and it's a very loyal town, and I would like to do business in it.
So, on the issue of underage drinking, Gina, who's going to be, you're going to be the onsite manager?
I'll be the onsite manager.
And who's... We have employees that will go through the server training?
Always be checking in. I'll be checking IDs. I'm also going to have doormen, not bouncers. They will be able to handle themselves in that way. But doormen in collared shirts and slacks, checking IDs, and also having people turn their hats around the right way, making sure that their dress is proper. I'm, you know, completely wonderful, somebody coming off the golf course, but I am, once again, ladies and gentlemen, so if you want to come in, you have a baseball hat on backwards, you have to put it the right way. You have to have an ID with you. You have to be of course of age. I will be serving food, so during the day, I believe that somebody could bring their children in for lunch, but I would sort of discourage that later in the evening, as the evening goes on.
And so, everybody knows, where is the, do you give us the location?
It's three blocks north of Adele's, right on Carson Street. It's the original Scotty's.
Okay.
And I have put quite a bit of money into it. It's beautiful. It's a 32-foot mahogany bar and 45 feet of mahogany paneling. It's black-and-white zebra carpets and white leather couches. It's a beautiful establishment. It's going to be an upper-class cocktail lounge, bistro, a little bit of duos and dancing, and I'm looking for a target market between 35 and 55, a little older.
Okay. I'm not allowed?
No.
I'm not too young.
I have heard that from many, many people, and that's not really my point, but that's where I'd like to, there's like no place for that market to go, so that's...
Supervisor Bonkowski says he can go. I mean, everybody else can go. I think, I don't know, maybe the three on his end, these guys over here can go, the three over here, the old guys, we're in trouble.
Well, you're more than welcome, absolutely.
Okay. Other questions, the board? Sheriff, go.
Just for clarification purposes, and Mr. Rowan knows that I'm going to bring this up, you do have a summary of the application in front of you, folks. For clarification purposes, this did present a challenge. There is a reported incident of forgery that is back in the late 1990s, filed by her ex-husband. That was not reported on the background check. Her application license indicates that she had not had any litigation against her. That litigation was discovered during the background check, where she was, and Ms. Rohr was brought back in to discuss it with us. It is a challenge. The information that she supplied is not correct. And so, the board needs to be aware of that. The information provided to the board is correct.
I'd like a chance to explain myself.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, I filled out the application, sat with one of your officers, and we went through the whole application. And she called me a couple days later and said, "Everything comes back clean on your background check, but you do have a judgment against you." And I said, "For what?" And she explained that I had a forgery. Well, this is what happened. I was at Joe Garlic's at the time. My father and my stepmother were primary owners. There was a gentleman that was loaning my father, I guess they call it soft money, where he got a loan for $30,000 from a private investor. I was on the property at the time in the meeting. My husband worked with us. He was the musician, Craig Fletcher. He was homesick with a sore throat. The gentleman who was loaning this money to my father sort of, and I, you know, I understand this shouldn't be the word, but coerced me to sign this paperwork. I was management at the time. And he said, "I want everybody that's management and the ownership to sign this paper." I said, "Well, my husband's homesick. He can't sign it." The man said, "Go ahead and sign his name." I called my husband on the phone and said, "Craig, they're asking me to sign your name. What do you want me to do?" And he says, "Well, I don't care. Sign my name. It's, yeah, I'm sick." And I said, "Okay." Now, this is prior to us ever having any financial difficulties in Joe Garlic's. So, the year goes by, this man's getting regular payments, the building is sold out from underneath my family. Our rent was $1,800, and it, to max out, at $2,700. It was sold out from underneath us to a gentleman named Gene Schoeff. Gene Schoeff was a criminal out of Seattle. He was fraudulent, and he was laundering his money through the St. Charles Hotel. He rewrote our lease. On the lease option, he did not own the building. Our rent went to $6,100 during the flood. We went $157,000 upside down in 90 days. We did not make it in a very short amount of time, and we failed as a success. This gentleman, at that point, very rapidly sued all of us for his $30,000. My husband, at the time, had put his house up in one of, with my father in this endeavor, as family, not as an owner, but as family. We were a family. And he had lost his home in this endeavor. So, this man, at this point, came after us civilly, I guess that's the word, us personally, Craig and I. And Craig and I had split up, and he, once again, had lost his home, and it was one of those moments of panic. And he said to me, "You know, what am I going to do? They're coming after me. They're suing me." I said, "Tell them I signed your name. I will explain this away, because you don't have anything left to lose. This was all so unfortunate." I profusely apologized for not signing that box. I did not remember this incident until the sheriff called me, and I explained it just as I'm explaining it to you. It was then dismissed off of us, and my father did pay that debt back over time. He did not pay that debt back 60 days after we shut our doors. He did pay that debt back, but it was not my debt, and the man who had asked me to do this knew it. But he was getting as many people involved as he could to get himself repaid, and he did get repaid. I was protecting my husband from something that did not belong to him, nor did it belong to me. And that was me being protective. And once again, I would not have even remembered it unless the sheriff's department brought it up, and this was brought up to me two weeks ago. And I have it on my signed form that this was, you know, that this was explained to her and how I explained it, and I explained it in exactly this manner. I have no other explanation for you for signing the box improperly, other than I would not have ever thought of it, because it never actually affected us personally. It went directly to my father, landed on his shoulders. My husband was protected from it, and we moved on. And he did not pursue charges on me. He just was protecting himself, and I was wishing him to do so.
Okay.
And I apologize for my loss of memory of that incident.
Supervisor Bonkowski has a question. But let me, just to digest it, there was no criminal complaint? Was there a criminal complaint filed, or not?
There was a criminal report filed, but no complaint filed by the DA's office.
Okay, so there's a report filed, and that's filed by Mr. Fletcher, the then-husband?
That's correct.
And so, then, the box that was not checked correctly was what?
On the personnel history record that's supplied by the Carson City Business License Division, in paragraph number 10, Arrest, Detentions, and Litigation, subparaphrase F, have you, as an individual member of a partnership or owner, director, or other officer of the corporation, ever been a party to a lawsuit as a plaintiff or defendant?
Okay, so that covers both criminal and civil things. So, what happened here was that there was a civil action to recover a debt, and that's where this thing happened. Okay. Supervisor Bonkowski.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a couple of hard questions for you, so think carefully about your answers. Tell me how you are different today than you were back then, because you showed a distinct lack of judgment at that time for two reasons. First, signing the agreement when you felt that you weren't actually taking on the debt, because signing that agreement, you actually did take on that debt. And then, secondly, choosing to sign your husband's name, whether you made a phone call to him or not. So, to me, my vote today hinges on your ability to convince me that you have changed and matured, and that you can show a better judgment today than you did then.
What's changed today is I am doing this business on my own. I've applied for everything on my own. My father is a very strong-willed man. He's been a very successful man. And first off, I was sitting next to him during this event, and he was also telling me, as his daughter, "It's fine." I never thought that I was entering into something that would ever be brought back to me, because, one, it's my father. When it was, I fought it like a woman. I did not go to my father. I protected the man that should not have been involved or in trouble for it. What this shows me was character, to say, "You come after me, and I will answer for this." And I'm today answering for this. And I would only say that that shows me who my character is. I was not going to say, "Well, you deal with it," or, you know, "Let's see what happens." I made an error in that afternoon. And I agree that I made an error in that afternoon. And I've also made an error two weeks ago by not recognizing what that box meant to me today, because I, it never did come to my doorstep. It hovered outside my house, and the wolf was there, but it did not actually come to me. My father did step in front and did take care of his debt and what happened at Joe Garlic's. He couldn't get my husband's house back. I took that on emotionally, as something that we did together and lost, so...
So, if you found yourself in the same situation today, and you were sitting at a table, and there were people that could exert influence over you, and they were trying to get you to sign something, how were you going to handle that differently?
There is nobody that can exude influence over me at this time, not even my father. I've been working for him for the last five years, and we are, he's taught me everything I know, but I now have learned how to even fight with my own father over a point I believe in. I have grown up quite a little bit from, and I had not worked with my father. That was a new event. I've been in the business 37 years, and I worked for everybody but him. He taught me everything I know. This was my first time working with the master, so to speak, and he is a master, and he's very well-known for being one. I trusted him. I trust him today, but I will fight him today when we have, when he says something to me and I say, "That's not right." And there's witnesses that will tell you that I've had full-out, drag-out fights with my father in the middle of our establishment in Reno about, "No, that's not how you taught me, and that's not what I'm going to do." So, and it's my business, my home, my family, and my children, my mother that I'm taking care of. And I have grown up quite a bit from them, and I have learned a lot more about business, and I've learned a lot more in the last four months than I ever knew I knew, just establishing this business and signing contracts and becoming a corporation and getting a liquor license and applying for everything. I'm doing everything right to the best of my ability today to bring something beautiful to Carson City and to upgrade what's going on, so that people have a nice place to go and nice people to be around, and I'm one of them.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Anybody? All right. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the staff report, and we'll see where that goes. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make it.
Supervisor Aboud, go.
I move to approve Gina Rohr as the liquor manager for Living the Good Life LLC, DBA The Good Life Liquor License Number 15-30040, located at 1480 North Carson Street.
Motion by Supervisor Aboud, second by Supervisor McKenna. On the motion discussion, discussions in order. Go.
Obviously, I have some concerns, but at the same time, I understand the need for us to have new vibrant businesses here in town, so I'm inclined to give you enough rope to hang yourself. I hope you do really well. Thank you.
Heavenly, thank you.
Anybody else? On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. Record reflect that the sheriff is nay. Anybody else? Did I miss anybody else? Thank you, and, but thank you. We'll be up there to take a look and see what you're doing, but thank you for your investment in the community, Gina.
Does that mean yes?
Yes.
Oh, it does.
I'm sorry. I should have said, you know, I'm moving a little fast here, so that means yes.
This gentleman means a lot and his, and his opinion means a lot. And once again, I apologize deeply to you and the whole Sheriff's Department. I would never, ever have done that purposely. It was a misjudgment on myself because I just didn't see it and I apologize. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you, Gina. All right, all right. Is that the, that's the only one we're taking care of today? So, we're gonna move to item fourteen, public comment on the conclusion. Anybody? I don't hear any. Okay, so, are we ready to adjourn? Is the Liquor Entertainment Board ready? Okay, unless there's an objection, we are adjourned. As the Liquor Entertainment Board, we will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you for, uh, the discussion this morning. Okay. Let's now take up, uh, item seventeen. Assessor.
Mr. Mayor, item seventeen is an action item to remove, to remove, uh, property taxes and penalties, um, that have been deemed uncollectible in the amount of nine hundred and one dollars and ninety-three cents.
Okay. The assessor is here. Do you, anybody wanna hear from the assessor or are we ready to do this? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the removal of the taxes and penalties from the unsecured twenty-ten, twenty-eleven and twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve tax rolls per NRS three sixty-one point five six zero seven in the amount of nine hundred one dollars and ninety-three cents.
Motion by Supervisor Mankowski, second by Mr. Supervisor McKenna and Supervisor Abbot. On the motion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote nay carried unanimous. Okay, let's take up, uh, the next one.
Mr. Mayor, um, our Fire Chief, uh, is gonna discuss this item. Uh, item eighteen is an action item that would delegate this board's authority, uh, to a prioritized list of individuals who are named, uh, in the resolution, uh, to sign, uh, a transfer of authority to an incident management team in the event of a declared disaster. The late material that should be, uh, in front of you, we modified slightly one of the items in that resolution to prioritize and order those four individuals.
Why don't you tell us what's going on here? I'd like you to also address whether we've done this in the past and, also, Chief, what does this do to me as the, from the title of mayor? I mean...
Well, it, uh, it, um, I, I will answer those questions, sir. The, the, um, the first question, uh, we have done this in the past. Um, a previous board did it and, uh, we're changing it now, obviously, because, um, of the city manager change. What essentially this resolution does is, um, grants the, there are certain individuals, the sheriff, myself, public courts director, that have statutory authority to manage incidents, health director, under their control. Um, we have this statutory authority. However, that authority doesn't rest with anyone outside of our government. So, if we were to bring in an incident management team, and the most likely event is a wildland fire, in fact, the last time we used this was a wildland fire, um, that incident management team is comprised of federal, state and local individuals from around the state, could be from out of state. That incident commander isn't an employee of this city. And so, as such, he doesn't have the authority to manage that incident the way I have the authority to manage an incident or even the way you have the authority to manage an incident. So, what this does is grants our authority in managing that incident. It isn't broad control beyond the incident. In other words, he doesn't have authority to raise the speed limit, um, or to change taxes or to remove a stop sign. Um, he has authority to manage an incident. So, the focus of that is, is simply that. And when we do a delegation of authority, we do a delegation of authority in such a fashion that it delineates the powers that we give that incident management team. We describe to him what our expectations are in terms of providing for the safety of our community, the safety of our employees, um, our fiscal picture, if you will, as to how we expect him or her to manage that incident. It, the, the, as, as, as a converse example, um, every year I get a letter from the Bureau of Land Management that grants me a, a delegation of authority to manage incidents on their land. We literally have thousands of acres of federal land here, as you know. Without that authority, I technically can't go on their land and fight a fire. We would and we always have, but they give us that blanket delegation of authority at the beginning of a fire season every year so that, because we're almost always first on scene and when they deplete resources in the region, we maintain our strength at a minimum level, so we're always there to provide that for them. So, um, th- the other issue with a delegation of authority is that the, the, for the board to act, um, as you probably know, you need to function as a board. Individually, um, you don't have the authority to enter into this agreement. The mayor does have certainly some authorities under CCMC i- in a declared disaster, but we're, in, in some instances here, we're stopping short of a declared disaster. And there, it, we may not have the ability to get three of you together to be able to sign a delegation of authority. The other thing that further complicates it, and the most recent time we used it, was on the Lyon Hand Fire, which was the fire that started in Lyon County, uh, came to Carson, went back to Lyon County and back to Carson, out on Highway fifty, it was in two thousand and five. And that delegation of authority was signed under the resolution that I had at the time by myself at the direction of the city manager. And it involved, it involved us, it involved Lyon County, it involved a fire district in Lyon County and it involved one federal agency. So, it can be impractical to get all of those into public body meetings to get those documents signed. And again, delegations and cost share agreements are the way the fire business is conducted around the country. Um, I'm not saying you should do it because everybody does it, I'm not trying to imply that, but what I am saying to you is that it's not out of the norm, it's not an unusual, um, request and it's a very common practice. So, hopefully, I've, I've addressed at least some of your questions, but clearly not all of them, so I'm ready to answer any you might have.
Stacy, can you just go over what we talked about yesterday, which is that the authority would not be delegated to all four people on the list, but would be delegated to one in priority order?
Correct. So, the, the way we rewrote this i- is that, uh, the authority would be delegated to those individuals in the order listed on the sheet so that there isn't confusion, um, that all four of us would go in there and try and negotiate. I, I wouldn't anticipate that would happen. My guess is that the way it would function is that I would be at the table, I would contact the city manager, I would say to him, here's what we're doing, do you wanna come and sign it? Are you good with me signing it? And that's probably the way it would work. If he weren't available, it would go to, to Marina, if she weren't available, it would go directly to me. So, but by putting the language that we put in there, I think we made it clear that it's in that, in that order so that there isn't a conflict, for instance, between the city manager and I over who would sign it.
My correction is only grammatical. The first whereas is spelled incorrectly, even in the late material.
Okay, thank you.
Whereas, I just have, no, sorry. Stacy, I know we had some brief conversations about this. At, my question initially is, when would this go into effect? How would this be initiated? Under what circumstances would this preclude the authority of the mayor and the mayor pro tem? When does this go into effect and, and under what circumstances would this occur?
Well, uh, it, it, it doesn't usurp any authority the mayor has. It just grants, so, so when we sign a delegation of authority, we're not, we're not giving up our rights, we're just sort of, um, parallel, parallely, in a parallel fashion, providing the incident management team. So, we don't lose those rights. So, so we're not giving anything up and I think that's, that's an important point. We're just allowing them the same rights, uh, that, that I have or that the city manager has or that the mayor has to manage an incident. So, when we would use it is, uh, again, most likely, uh, and I'll use a couple of scenarios. Uh, if, uh, on a wildland event, uh, there are very strict criterias on when events escalate from one level, if you will. So, we call, we type incidents, so there's everything from a type one wildland fire incident to a type six wildland fire incident. And a type six incident is a burning bush, um, not to get biblical, but very small fire. A, a type one incident is, um, a massive fire. The waterfall fire was a type one incident. The rim fire in Yosemite was a type one incident. Under, um, national wildfire policy that the feds have to apply and that are industry standards, we have to manage that incident with the correct number of management people to, for the classification of the fire. So, so the fire gets rated, gets a complexity rating by, by an incident commander, so if I'm the incident commander, I, I do a complexity analysis on that fire. I determine the type of fire it is and if we don't have the type or the quantity of managers to manage that incident, then I have to call in an incident management team. Now, I'm not bound by law to call one in, but I'm, I'm bound by best practice and I'm bound by what could end up being negligence and has been termed negligence on incident commanders in the past for improperly managing a large-scale fire like that. So, once we hit a point where we need that incident management team and the, the components of that team, then I would make the call through our channels to bring an incident management team in. At the same time that we're managing the incident, that incident management team then begins to come in. And there are, I think, uh, ten or so type one incident management teams around the country. There are, um, within the Great Basin region, so basically Nevada, Southern Idaho, Utah, uh, we've got four, uh, type two incident management teams and there are four or five type three incident management teams just here in the region. So, we call those teams in to manage the incident, so that's the scenario.
How's the authority, once it, the authority's been granted to it, to this authority, how is it relinquished back? Is it, is it for that incident, once it goes away?
Correct, correct. So, when we do, when we do the cost share, um, excuse me, when we do the, uh, delegation of authority, uh, we put that it can be terminated at, at any time and then we also usually put an ending date in there. And oftentimes, a delegation of authority will get revised two or three times during the incident because the management objectives may change. Um, on the waterfall fire, for instance, when, when we signed the delegation of authority for that, it changed two or three times because as the fires on the downslope, your, your priorities change from extinguishing the fire to, um, taking care of our natural resources, to restoring our water systems, to, um, restoring the land so that it, it, you're preventing runoff, for instance. So, as those priorities change, you can change that all the way through that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anything further, Chief?
No. I apologize for the...
City Manager, you okay with this?
I am, Mayor.
All right. Public comment? Mr. White, good morning.
Good morning, Board. Mayor, for the record, Morris White. Under what conditions, if you're not happy with the incident management, uh, and who would be able to revoke this particular action and get it back into control where you want it to be?
My, my understanding of that would be the person who's, either one of the people on that, four members on that list could revoke it at any time.
Thank you.
Unless I've said something wrong, I think that's what it is. I mean, people who get the authority can remove it.
You're correct. Whoever signs it can, can remove it.
All right.
Resolution number is two thousand fourteen R nineteen.
I didn't hear any more public comment either, I don't think, so, okay. All right. Motion's in order, Supervisor Abbot.
I move to adopt resolution number two thousand fourteen R nineteen, delegating the authority of the Carson City Board of Supervisors to sign a transfer of authority to an incident management team to manage a disaster, delegating the authority of the Carson City Board of Supervisors to enter into cost share agreements and establishing a list of individuals who are authorized to sign the transfer of local authority and cost share agreements on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and Carson City and other matters properly related thereto.
Motion by Supervisor Abbot, second by Supervisor McKenna. On the motion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thank you very much. What's next, City Manager? Where are we, nineteen? Go.
Mayor, uh, our Health Director, Nikki Acker, uh, is gonna discuss, uh, an application for a partnership, uh, to improve community health.
Hi, for the record, Nikki Acker, Director, Health and Human Services. Good morning. So, I'm asking for the permission to apply for a partnership to improve community health grant through the CDC. This is a three-year grant that ranges from a hundred thousand to four million. This grants an initiative to improve health and reduce the burden of chronic diseases which have a substantial impact on our healthcare system within this area. Our healthcare system includes residents from Lyon and Story County and, um, that goes along with why we're asking to partner with, or not asking to partner, but we would be partnering with Healthy Communities Coalition. The state health departments are not eligible to apply for this grant, it's local health departments. And what, one of the requirements is, is to collaborate with coalitions that are in existence and have been in existence and show that they can manage different programs. So, um, if we were to get this grant, we have identified two coalitions, Healthy Communities, like I, um, indicated, and Partnership Carson City to, um, partner with us on these efforts. This grant require, it, like I indicated, it does require that you work with coalitions that have proven, um, that they can manage projects. The chronic disease factors that we chose to focus on are poor nutrition, physical inactivity and lack of access to chronic disease prevention, risk reduction and management opportunities. And at this time, both, um, coalitions, they, um, plan to work with existing community food projects to increase access to healthy foods. And, um, and then if I can address some of the questions that were, um, posed and if I don't address them fully, go ahead and, um, ask me more questions. But there was a question of why we chose to partner with, um, Healthy Communities and Partnership Carson City. And again, it's, um, these are two coalitions that we've worked with on different projects and they do have good proven records of following through with those projects. Because of the turnaround time to get this grant written and submitted, we needed to have coalitions that we've worked with in the past and we already have that good partnership. There was a question, if, um, the board didn't approve partnering with other counties, can Carson City still apply? And again, we're, we're partnering with the coalitions, not the counties themselves. And, like I indicated, it is a requirement of this grant to partner with coalitions. Let's see, the board wanted to know if, um, they needed to approve the partnerships that, um, with the coalitions. I'm asking that we get the permission to apply for the grant, not for the permission to work with those coalitions. And, um, there was a question about have other counties, have they went through the similar approval process? And again, we're partnering with, um, coalitions, not counties, and I, um, am not sure what their approval process is. I do know with Partnership Carson City that the Steering Committee is apprised of grants that are upcoming and which, um, may be being worked on. Will there be new positions that are created by this grant? Uh, yes, within the grant, it could be a new position, but it, uh, you know, we're gonna look at existing staff also. And, um, and again, a lot of this, um, partnership will be passing down the money through to the coalitions of work that they're already doing so that they can expand upon it. And do, um, do I know what percentage is going to be passed through at this point? We haven't worked all that out. You know, we're, again, just asking for the permission to apply, we're still working on the grant application, it's due July twenty-second. And, uh, will we have expenses for this, for the partnership? It's not really expenses for the partnership, we may have expenses within the grant, but that will all be written into the grant. And then, the coalitions may have expenses and again, that would be part of their sub-allocation. Um, I have Kathy Bartos here from Partnership Carson City, um, to show her support and if I haven't addressed something that she would like to address, she can... Did I miss anything, Kathy?
I can clarify a few things. Is she right where you are? All right, moving. No escaping. This is Kathy Bartos, for the record, I'm the Executive Director of Partnership Carson City. One of the reasons that it's good to involve coalitions is for cost effectiveness. When they contract with us, then we're able to hire those people that will, uh, complete some of the activities that are in the grant. To give you an example, Partnership Carson City started that mobile recreation project which goes out into communities where recreation isn't available. We can work with Boys and Girls Club to, you know, add to their staff time, add to, um, additional driver time and whatnot. That runs through us, so it doesn't in- involve her having to deal with city pay structures and all of that. We're finding now that the state is using coalitions quite a bit more just for that purpose. So, that's one of the reasons that coalitions need to be involved. It's a tri-county initiative because... It's a tri-county initiative because, A, that makes the grant much more desirable to funders when they see multiple counties working together, especially when you have, you can combine a hub, which is a state capital, with a rural community that has verifiable need, and you put that together, that makes our application much more powerful. Not only that, but our farmers that are going to be intricate in this are in Lyon County. So, we've already had, thanks to projects like Karen's Greenhouse Project and Lina Maroney's Farmer's Market, we already have a pretty strong connection with our, with our local growers and providers of healthy food. We're in a good position with this grant right now because of the potential of the hub project coming aboard. Greenhouse is off and running. You've made connections with a culinary project. So, there's a lot of potential for this grant right now. And because we are getting permission to apply, if you don't like the end product, if we get a grant award, you don't have to accept it. But going through the process of writing a grant is beneficial to everybody. For us to write a grant, we have to do a whole research on our problem statement. We find stuff we didn't find out before. We have to really survey our existing resources and see what we currently have that we can work with and we can enhance, and we also look at what we don't have. We put all that together. If we don't get the grant, we don't get the grant, but we still have all that work done that we can reply and we can pull from to do future projects. And, you know, we're pretty successful here in Carson City. So, we're just asking for permission to move forward with this process. One question that didn't come up, but I know it should, is is there a match for this? They say, in the language of this grant, they say they would like to see like a 5% match. We're encouraged to do it, but it's not mandatory. So, once we get into the budget, we'll see what we can do, what local resources we have that we can apply, we can apply to match. So, essentially, that's it. We want to enhance accessibility to healthy food, and we want to enhance accessibility to healthy alternative activities. We've got some good ideas already. I was up all night with my little notepad, those 3:00 AM brain flashes you get. So, we're ready to go on this.
I'm not sure, Kathy, don't go away yet. I'm not sure which one of you would want to answer this, but if the coalitions can't handle all the staffing for this, for implementation, and we did have to bring on additional staff to the city, how many positions do you anticipate that would be, and would the intention be that those positions go away at the end of the grant?
Right now, within our scope of work, most of the positions are community-based positions that would run through the coalitions. What we do is, we don't provide a lot of direct services. That's not our role. Our role is to identify who in our community does do those direct services. Let's use the mobile rec again. We bottom a trailer, they've got it, it's ready to go. What they need is additional staff time. We would run that through them. Joyce Buckingham has a food bank, Jim Peckham with Fish has a food bank. We would run that funding through, and we put as much into the community-based employment pools we possibly can. We try not to burden them with more. They will probably need, and we can apply for up to $900,000. That's what we're shooting for. So, there's plenty of money in there for Carson City Health and Human Services as the fiscal agent to build in, to manage the oversight of the project. But I can tell you right now from past experience, most of the, most of the scope of work management and program reporting will be on the, on the two coalitions, Partnership Carson City and Healthy Communities Coalition, and we're set up to do that.
So, if I understand you correctly, if additional staff was brought on by the city, it would be to manage the administration of the grant, so that position would go away at the end of the grant anyway?
Correct.
So, where does that person go?
Well, that person's kind of in that position right now. They're involved in a grant right now that's, that's timing out.
Okay, so then we wouldn't necessarily have to bring on another staff person.
Correct.
What I'm just trying to find out is what the end game is here. What happens to that person if we bring somebody on to administer the grant at the end of the three years? Where does that person go? Do they bump somebody else, or do they get laid off? Or what happens to that person?
If the grant's not there, like I said, where I want to try and use existing people. So, you know, we're so heavily grant-funded that as grants are going away, you know, I'm continually looking for other grants that match up. Look at the skill set that the individuals have and see if they can work on that grant. So, yes, if the grant totally went away, we didn't have anything coming down, it could be a potential layoff. But again, you know, like I indicated, I'm looking for other things out there.
I just want to comment, as much of an ever-ready bunny as Kathy is, Kristi McGill is even more so that. I have worked with her through Healthy Communities Coalition. She's done a fantastic job of pulling that community together in very tough times. And I understand the need to expand the food source. I know from the greenhouse project standpoint, we produce a lot, but there's always more needed. So, it's an issue that does need to be addressed, and I think we should take advantage of this opportunity.
And as we see more grants coming, especially from the CDC, they're asking for these partnerships with coalitions. That's what they're, they're focusing on, is not someone doing it just in a silo, but bringing in all these different partnerships. So, we'll see more grants that are asking for this type of involvement.
Thank you for addressing many of my questions. This, today, this action by the board would grant you permission to proceed forward to get this grant.
Correct.
Now, once you get that and obtain that grant, you will come back to the board with the budget, line item budget, how that money will be spent, and questions we can ask about what we're doing and how we're doing with those funds, correct?
Yes. When I, if we were to obtain this grant, I need to come back for approval to accept the grant. So, this is just the first approval process.
And actually, before we even submit it, we need signatures from the mayor and city manager Marano on it. So, the completed budget, it will be available to, to you at that time to look at it. If we are fortunate enough to get it, they're going to award 40 nationally on this, so that takes our odds of getting this grant from abysmal up to decent. So, Carson City, we're a tough one because we're not a frontier. A lot of times, they want to do frontiers, or sometimes they want big inner-city, and we're just kind of floating around there in the middle, so we really have to sell ourselves. But the grant, the grant budgets can always be adjusted even after the grant award. So, but before we can, we get the grant award, but you guys have to accept it before we can proceed.
And a lot of time, what happens with the grant budgets is they expect that the budgets are going to have to be adjusted somewhat. They, and they kind of, they know that that is a reality. So, CDC is very well aware, and they will do budget augmentation.
Thank you.
So, you think you're going to apply for $900,000?
I bet you.
Good for you.
Going for it.
Good for you.
If you don't ask, you...
If you don't ask, the answer's always no. I got you. All right. Further comments from the board? Questions from the board? Public comment? Anybody? I don't see anybody. Okay. Nikki, okay with all this?
I am, sir.
All right. Motion's in order, Supervisor Rayboud.
I move to approve Carson City Health and Human Services applying for a partnerships to improve community health, P-I-C-H, grant through the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC. This grant will be used to combat poor nutrition, physical inactivity, and to address the lack of access to chronic disease prevention, risk reduction, and management opportunities.
Motion by Supervisor Rayboud, a couple seconds from Supervisor Brunkowski and Supervisor McKenna. On the motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the good work you guys do, too.
Thank you.
And Kathy, I'll see you at the next Partnership Carson City meeting, I think, right?
Yes, you will.
That's 17, that's the 17th one, is it?
Yes, next Friday.
Next Friday?
Two weeks.
Okay, I got it. All right. All right. Number 20, is that where we are?
We're at item 19, Mr. Mayor. That is a report from the Finance Director, 19 Alpha. No, I'm sorry.
28. I stand corrected.
28.
I like that term, 20 Alpha. Man, I'm getting into this. This is all right. 20 Alpha.
Old habits.
I would say Bravo Zulu to you. All right.
Finance Director will brief a report on the condition of each fund through June 24th.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the board. For the record, Nick Provinti, Finance Director. So, this is the typical report that you see at every meeting. The condition of the fund of the Treasury and statements of receipts and expenditures through June 24, 2014, per NRS 251030 and NRS 354290. If there's any questions?
Questions from the board? Questions from public? Comments? Supervisor Brunkowski, motions in order.
I move to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the Treasury and the statements of receipts and expenditures through June 24, 2014, per NRS 251.030 and NRS 354.290.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Brunkowski, seconded by Supervisor McKenna, and Supervisor Rayboud on the motion discussion. Hearing all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passed unanimously. Okay. While you're there, can we just take up the issue of the ad valorem tax for the Nevada Tax Commission? Is that right? Nikki, go ahead.
For the record, Mr. Mayor, that would be 20 Bravo in this case.
Good.
What is C?
That'd be Charlie.
Charlie.
You're going to get there, man. I'll tell you what, and this is good exercise. This is good stuff, man.
Again, for the record, Nick Provinti, Finance Director. So, we're asking you to adopt a resolution to levy the Carson City Fiscal Year 2014-2015 ad valorem tax rates, as were certified by the Nevada Tax Commission. The rates were actually certified on June 25, 2014, by the Tax Commission, and the board is required to approve the rates after the commission approves, after the state commission approves the rates, so the treasurer can send out the tax bills, and he'll be doing that in the next couple of weeks, the real property and personal property tax bills. The only, the only really question that I have that I can answer is on District 2.6, which only has the base rate. They do not have the 3 cents from the, from the Carson Water Subconservancy District. This is a small part of Lake Tahoe that, it's mountain, and then it goes down into the, into the Lake Tahoe Basin, and they're just not part of the subconserv, the Carson Water Subconservancy District. So, they're not levied the 3 cents. So, they're the only district in Carson City that has a $3.51 tax rate. So, if there's any other questions?
Public comment? Seeing none. Motion's in order, go.
I move to adopt resolution number 2014-R20, a resolution to levy the Carson City Fiscal Year 2014-2015 tax rate, as certified by the Nevada Tax Commission.
Motion by Supervisor Brunkowski, seconded by Supervisor Rayboud on the motion discussion. Jim?
I know I've had a discussion with our city manager on this issue. I did vote against this, and I brought to his attention on page one, approved by the governing body and so forth. My argument on the tax rate at that time was I wanted, left at 3.56, I wanted those two pennies to be put aside for capital improvement. So, I still, my vote still remains the same, but I do want the recognition, which I clarified with the city manager, of my vote on that first page. Thank you.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes 4 to 1. All right. Let's take up item 21?
We're at 22, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, 22.
We've got a number of action items for potential contracts. 22A is one to award our BMX lighting project to impact construction.
Morning, Mayor, Board of Supervisors, Kim Belt, purchasing contracts. I have an errata sheet for the changes Supervisor Brunkowski requested to the clerical changes on the contract, and I've got those, and I'll pass those out right now.
Staff is recommending to award contract 1314-194, titled BMX Track Lighting Project to Impact Construction for a base bid amount of $154,894.95, plus a bid alternate BP5 of $14,805, for a total bid award of $169,699.95. Engineer's estimate for this project was $188.95. The low bid is considerably less than the engineer's estimate. We had seven bidders, and the project, project manager is here to discuss the project if there are specific questions about the project.
Let me, let me ask a question. The errata, you put, you gave us on the handout kind of a revised contract with the changes that were requested.
Right.
I'd ask, are there substantive changes in there, or are they?
No.
Okay.
No, that's basically, there was...
There are clarification changes?
There were like include to, including, there was adding a comma, that type of, that type of...
Important, but there, but the guts of what we're doing here hasn't changed.
Right. There's no substantive change.
Do I get that right, Brad, or not? Okay. All right. Supervisor Shirk, and then Supervisor Rayboud.
On the changes that we just received this morning, is it possible, I mean, we read the, what was given to us in the package, and now we're giving something different here, is there any way to highlight what the changes are in this document, this, not today, but in the future?
Okay.
Could we, when we get this material, could it be highlighted, yellow, underlined, or some?
Yes, I can do that.
Something in, in all of this?
Right.
Thank you.
Kim, my question is, because the awarded bid is so much lower from the engineer's estimate, was the type of lighting specified for this specifically such that we're not, there's no compromise on that aspect of things?
The project manager will be able to answer that question.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Darren Anderson from Project Manager Republic Works. The lighting was specified.
Great, so they're not, they're not cutting back on that aspect of things?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And just for the record, could you go over the, on the funding of this? It shows $91,858.58 coming from the grant fund with a contingency amount of $91.47.97. I just wanted to get on the record that there is enough in the grant fund account to cover the contingency and the actual funding portion.
Darren's looking at me, so I'll answer that one. Roger Mulendorf, Parks and Recreation Director, and this was a question that Supervisor Brunkowski sent earlier in the day, earlier yesterday. And we do have enough funds within that grant source to cover that contingency. We have currently about $107, the original grant was $122,721. We have about $107,000 left in that grant for the construction of the project, and so we have enough funds to cover that contingency. So, we'd anticipate leaving it from that fund source.
So, any excess amounts left from that grant, do they end up going back at the end if they're not used?
They go back to the grant because it's, it's a 50-50 grant. We're going to try to make sure that we milk the grant as much as possible from the outset, though.
Roger, I was just going to ask, on the grant, what grant is that? It just says grant fund. Is it specifically for the lighting of this project?
Yes, it's a, what's called a Land Water Conservation Fund grant, and it's a federal grant that is administered through the states. Common recreation grant for parks and recreation-type facilities and projects.
And I did email to Kim. My question was also on the funding sources of using the RTC tax, and my argument was I don't think it should come from that. I think it should come from the quality of life or from the grant. So, I was just questioning, why are we using RTC, the residential construction tax, for this? When I read the, the funding mechanism and how that's supposed to be prioritized, I didn't see it fitting in. That was just me personally.
No, that's a good question. Residential construction tax is a tax that, it's a program to fund recreation projects within the community. And back when we were bringing in a lot of residential construction tax into the, into our budget, this project was identified back at that time, several years ago, as being a residential construction tax project. Then, as you know, when residential dwelling construction fell off, we were looking for other forms or other funding sources for this project, and we came to the board, I think maybe about six months ago or so, and, and brought a request to reallocate some quality-of-life funds, which we didn't have earmarked for this project from another source to this project, to offset, to offset the cost for the project.
Roger, first off, I want to congratulate you on your tie. Soccer balls and American flag.
You know, I looked at, I found this tie. It was hidden in my closet. I think I bought this back in 1994 when the World Cup was first, United States. So, I looked at that tie, and I thought, well, I thought I believed, or I believed I thought that we would win, and that... that we would win, and that evidently wasn't the case, so. But I like your tie, too. You're very sharp today.
Well, mine's a little older. I believe that we won, getting as far as we did. But back on to this, if I remember right, this project was, was put on the approved list back when we were doing subdivisions, quite a few subdivisions, and I believe Steve Castens was director of Parks and Rec when this thing was first put on the list. That's probably 10 to 15 years ago?
That is correct. This project was actually part, the lighting for the BMX track was actually part of the original master plan for the Edmonds Sports Complex. So, this, this project has been, kind of been the hopper for many, many years.
And if I remember right, when this came before us, six months or so ago, you were at the end of the period of the grant, and we needed to either approve it and come up with the match, or the balance of the funding, or we're going, we were going to lose the rest of the grant funds and lose the project. Was that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
City manager, you okay?
I am, sir.
All right. Public comment? See none. Supervisor Abad, thank you very much.
I move to determine that impact construction is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder pursuant to NRS Chapter 338 and to award contract number 1314-194 titled BMX Track Lighting Project to Impact Construction for a base bid amount of $154,894.95 plus bid alternate BP.5 of $14,805 for a total bid award of $169,699.95 with a contingency amount not to exceed $16,900 to be funded from the capital projects' construction accounts in the quality-of-life fund, the residential construction tax fund, and the grant fund as currently provided in the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget, with the expectation that the budgets will get augmented in fiscal year 2014-2015.
Motion by Supervisor Abad, second by Supervisor Bonkowski, I think, or Dan Supervisor McKenna, on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. What's next? Bravo. We're doing, no, Bravo, right?
Kim Belt, this is item 22B, or 22 Bravo, as everybody's been saying.
Good. You're getting there. All right.
This is to approve a contract, contract number 1415-012 with Manhard Consulting LTD. This is an on-call engineering consulting services contract for utility system modeling assistance evaluations, and it's a task-based on-call contract, and it'll be assigned various contracts, tasks, and it'll be, various accounts will be used for this contract. This, Manhard was selected during the RFP process back in January, RFP 1213, I mean, 1314-129, and they were selected from a variety of firms. I think we have five or four firms listed for, that were approved and qualified for the projects, and this is what the contract's for, and it's on-call. If there's any questions specifically on the projects, we can answer those.
The corrections that I sent you, did they get included in the ladies draft?
I'm sorry, I didn't get any-
Okay, I'll, I'll go over them. I'll bring them up right now. If you go to page five of 21, under item 7.4.
7.4.
Yep, termination for nonappropriation, second line. Can we change that so that it reads, in the event that Carson City does not appropriate?
So, that would read, I'm sorry, Brad, that would read, in the event that Carson City does not-
Appropriate, since it's a nonappropriation clause.
Right. Okay.
And then on page eight of 21, first paragraph, which is 11.1, in the third line from the bottom of that paragraph, can we strike the words "or for any other reason whatsoever" and put a period after termination?
Right.
Yeah, that, that's eight of, eight of 21.
Sir, I know, and I appreciate Brad bringing that up, Supervisor Bonkowski. We've been through this one before, and so you need to kind of take a look at these contracts to make sure that we, if that, that's form language, we should be pulling that out. I mean, because it's the, I think what he's saying, and I don't mean to put words in his mouth, is that, you know, "or for any other reason whatsoever" is really pretty rather vague.
Okay.
Okay? Brad, I'm sorry.
And, and then, sorry, then on the last one, it's on page 14 of 21, items 23.2 and 23.3 on that page are exact duplicates of items 4.8.1.2 and 4.8.1.3. So, if we could strike one or the other, I don't, I don't know that it matters which, but it's an exact duplicate.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
I think we can take care of that. Okay. Supervisor Shirk, Jim, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Morning, Kim. On the on-call engineering consulting service, is this specifically for the new facilities that we just passed, passed the bond issue on for sewer and water, or is this in general for all of Public Works?
In general for all of Public Works.
All of Public- But if it does apply to the new sewer treatment plants, it would be taken out of that funding?
Correct. It'll go to the appropriate projects and the accounts set up for those appropriate projects.
Okay. Then on the last page, Exhibit A, the ranges they have, and the currently hourly rates they, they state, I mean, it's got a high example, project manager can be 105 to 165. Why can't we, I mean, how do we know what rates they're gonna charge until we call, and then they could go high and they could go low? Isn't there a medium rate that we could just-
What they're, what they're gonna do is they'll, they'll submit, we'll have a task, a proposal for Manhard to provide us with a work, scope of work proposal, and they will outline basically, you know, are you gonna have a project manager, is a senior, is it a senior project manager, is it just assistant project manager? And they'll have those rates, and it'll be in the proposal before it's approved, before the tasks are assigned.
So, when you call, then you're gonna, how would you, the city, determine what, you just tell them what you need, and then they will tell you what we think you, the person you need?
Right. They would tell us, this is how we would propose to do the work, and this is how we would get it done with these project managers, or like, say, the draftsman, or survey, they would have those all included into that.
So, when it comes back to us, it won't have such a variance that 40%?
No, no. It would be the fee that's actually hourly fee for that person.
Thank you.
Is it done? Jim, got it?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Yeah, okay. Public comment? Hearing none. Supervisor Abad.
I move to approve contract number 1415-012 with Manhard Consulting LTD pursuant to NRS 332.115-1B and NRS 625.530 to provide on-call engineering consulting services for utility system modeling assistance and evaluations through June 30th of 2015 for a not-to-exceed amount of $100,000 to be determined at the time each task order is issued to be funded from the various capital projects' services accounts in the Water Fund, the Sewer Fund, and the Stormwater Fund as provided for in fiscal year 2014-2015.
With the changes that-
With the changes as mentioned by Supervisor Bonkowski to the contract form.
Second. Just a motion, a second. My reading of what is done here, those changes, I think that 4.8.1.1 and 4.8.1.2 come out because they are, as Supervisor Bonkowski said, they are addressed under item 23, and item 23 speaks to ownership, which is what those things do. So, interpret the motion as saying, the changes that Supervisor Bonkowski mentioned and moving, deleting 4.8.1.1 and 4.8.1.2.
Correct.
All right. Further discussion? Are we ready? On the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, where are we on Charlie? Okay, this is what? I got it. You, she's up here. Nick, let's just have her take up this one. Go.
This is approval for a joiner contract with National Joint Powers Alliance for the purchase of landfill equipment. It's a Caterpillar 966M wheel loader, a Caterpillar excavator, and a Caterpillar D8T tractor through Cashman Equipment, which is exempt from a competitive bidding because this is a joiner contract. The total cost for the new equipment will be $1,420,326. If you have specific questions about the equipment, Curtis Horton's here to talk about the equipment.
Yeah, I think one of the questions we generally ask on these is, you know, I understand we're doing this as a joiner, but do we look at local folks as well for selling these? I mean, we've got other, have we looked at that, or do we just do the joiner? Curtis, you want to talk to that? Mr. Horton, come on up.
Curtis Horton, Public Works. We do look at local folks as much as possible. In Cashman Equipment, the vendor we're gonna purchase these items from is right out of Reno. They're as local as a heavy equipment dealer can get, so we do take a good look at that.
All right. Supervisor Bonkowski.
I just have a comment. Usually, my first question is, if we're replacing equipment, what was the useful life of the equipment that we're replacing? And the answers are in our packet, which are 10 years, 13 years, and 15 years old. So, the equipment that we're replacing is actually probably well beyond its useful life?
Well beyond.
Okay, thank you.
For the comments, Supervisor Shirk.
Quick question on, let me just read my questions that I sent earlier. The, the equipment that's being purchased, it is through the, we'll be paying for those through the landfill, the bond that we just approved, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And the, on one of the letters, it says waste handling arrangement for some items that were, I can read that specifically to you, but what does that mean? And why only that one piece of equipment has that arrangement?
The waste handling package is increased guarding for drives, windows, and hydraulics, and things of that nature. Some equipment is more susceptible to damage in that environment than other equipment is. The D8 and some other pieces, we order for that, we order the landfill package on specific equipment as necessary in order to protect it.
The, the Caterpillar 329 EL said fully equipped as requested, and that's what you just referred to right now, correct?
Yes.
And the other equipment, we don't need it.
Well, the other equipment will come protected for that environment. Yes.
Thank you.
Got it. Public comment? Motion's, motion to approve is in order. Supervisor Bonkowski, go.
I move to authorize Public Works to utilize joiner contract number 060311-CAT, a contract approved by National Joint Powers Alliance for the purchase of a Caterpillar 966M wheel loader, a Caterpillar excavator, and a Caterpillar D8T tractor through Cashman Equipment, which is exempt from competitive bidding pursuant to NRS 332.115 subsection 1M and NRS 332.195, providing Carson City's approved funding and purchasing procedures are followed.
Motion by Supervisor Bonkowski, second by Supervisor Abad on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Curtis.
Thank you.
All right. We're done with 22, I think. Nick, let's go to you on 23.
Mr. Mayor, you're authorized per NRS as a board to make grants available to various nonprofits to perform community service-type work. You'll see in the draft resolution where staff has recommended that those dollars go. About two-thirds of them, about $262,000 comes from the general fund. About one-third, or about $125,000, comes from quality-of-life, question 18, funding. That goes to the Boys and Girls Club, and that was part of the original language of that, of that initiative. We have about 3,000 goes from the RTC. In your supporting material, you'll see a spreadsheet that has the original amounts that were requested, the various recommendations that were made, and the final amount that staff has recommended for approval here this morning.
Yeah, and we've been through these. These are previously gone, we've gone through these. This is the formality of presenting it, okay? Public comment? Board comment? Motion's in order. Supervisor Abad.
Is this R21, Alan?
Correct.
Okay. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2014-R21, a resolution authorizing expenditures of funds to nonprofit organizations for fiscal year 2014-15.
Second. Motion by Supervisor Abad, second by Supervisor Bonkowski on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, Nick, where are we?
We're at 23B. The, the action item is to appoint one member to the, to manage the Wildlife Advisory Board. I just need one moment to see if Stanley is here. Stanley Zuber?
Yes.
No? It is a reappointment. No other applications have been received to date.
Okay. I think if there's a reappointment, we're, we're okay to do it. Motion's in order. Supervisor Bonkowski.
I move to appoint Stanley Zuber to the advisory board to manage wildlife for a three-year term that expires in July, expires at July 31st, 2017.
Motion by Supervisor Bonkowski, second by Supervisor Abad on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Let's take up the RTC.
23, Charlie, would be appointment to the RTC. We have two applications. If I could just see, a show of hands. Mark, are you here? And I already spoke with Michael. Mr. Mayor, if you could give me a short recess, what I'd like to do is take them both out of the room, brief them on the procedures, and then we'll bring them in one at a time, starting with Mark.
Absolutely. We'll be, we'll be at ease in place until you come back.
Very, very good, sir.
All right.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Charlie.
Good idea. Good.
Ready? Go ahead. Go, Nick. Who we have first?
First potential candidate is Mark Kimbrough.
Go ahead, Mark. Hey, good morning, Mark. How you doing?
Good morning.
Good to see you again.
Thank you. Mark Kimbrough for the record.
I think, you know, while you're here, I'd just ask you, are we okay with where we are on trails, or we want to sit tight on that a little bit?
You know, that was an issue that had been brought up through Muscle Power, and Chaz kind of championed that a little bit.
Okay.
But I have worked a lot with State Lands and didn't have the same concerns that Chaz did, but it was certainly something that could, be something that the city could do is go introduce themselves to Charlie and say hi, and, but I, I didn't have the same-
Okay. And so, the public knows what we're, what we're talking about here, and I apologize, but it has to do with transportation, mostly foot power. The question is whether we, you know, how we're getting along with our neighbors and our, and the state with respect to construction of trails and things like that. So, okay, I'm sorry. And I think I, you know, I, Mark, you've applied before, so I've got my questions answered there. So, who wants to go first? Karen, go.
Hi, Mark.
Hi.
Just to clarify for the record, you're all through with Planning Commission now, is that correct?
Yes, I left with a really nice meeting the other night.
I'm sure.
It was nice, after several years of kind of silence.
Exactly.
Yeah, Brad was there in the front row there.
Yeah. Well, moving on into this position, if you're chosen, the RTC- pedestrian and bicycle pathways as part of our regional transportation plan.
Well, that's part of my history of having spent several years on the Nevada Bicycle Advisory Board, which became a pedestrian board probably four, five years ago, dealing with those issues, because Nevada has such a high rate of pedestrian deaths. And we review plans a lot from NDOT for that issue. And then, actually, the other day, I noticed another set of plans, a concern on the pedestrian issues. And I think it's really critical to go, Complete Streets, that's a part of it, is make pedestrians, bicyclists feel friendly in the community. And it's in a design that allows cars to have free flow, but the safety of those people are designed into how you put it all together on the planet, so after you get everything done. In the past, streets are designed for cars, not necessarily for people on bikes. So Complete Streets really helps out a lot to protect those people, but not take away from free-flow streets and proper management of those streets, but keeping the pedestrians and bicyclists safe out there, so they'll get out more often. And as we all understand about this generation of youth, their lack of outside play, having pedestrian bicycle-friendly things help all that, because it makes them friendly, safe, and their parents can trust. And there's a whole bunch of stuff that goes with that, that we spent years advocating for and supporting in this state, so that it changes things in this state about how you plan for those two things. And I'll tell you, Nevada has had 180-degree reversal on the NDOT side to support more of that than they ever did before. And then I also sit on a committee that, Safe Routes to School program that allocates those monies. For the last two years, they've sat on this committee to assign those monies out, and I've seen some really great projects in all these little small towns, Fallon and, where were we at? Wendover and all these communities are trying to start doing that now, to have that as part of their community, which is also a tourism part, so you bring more money into your community. So I could talk on that for a long time, but I think that's enough for me to feel comfortable with that answer. Yeah.
Morning, Mark.
Good morning, John.
You still riding every day?
No. Actually, my grandkids are out of school, so I'm daycare right now and having a ball.
Okay. Carson City is basically 1.4 million short in basic maintenance money every year. Congress has not passed the renewal of the federal highway money, so it could happen, and I hope it doesn't, but it could happen, that starting in, say, I don't know, December, we have no money for streets and no money for construction. What would you cut?
What would I cut? Oh, thank you. I thought that was your guys' jobs, to figure that one out there.
That's what you're applying to do. That's the type of decision we make.
I understand that. Very tough decisions, and you don't have a shovel brigade where you can get everybody out with shovel and start on the freeway or something. But you really have to weigh everything in the community before you decide that, and that's a really difficult decision that communities have to make, because there's also the choices of raising taxes, which I'm sure John would be real excited about, raising any taxes in this community. But everybody understands, and it's been going on for years, that the gas-efficient cars are dropping gas taxes. The federal government can't seem to get their act together, passing continuing resolutions each year, and they're having to deal with these issues. And the community has to decide whether it's going to be a tax somehow, or they're going to cut something. And if you go in there with the idea that you have fewer sheriffs, or fewer firemen, or fewer schools with safety as part of it or something, it makes it very difficult. So it's going to be the, Nick Morano, our new city manager's job to sit there and look at all the budgets from all the departments and come in here and say, okay, we've talked to all these department heads, and this is where we think this can happen. And I respect the process of looking at all the city departments of where this can happen before you tax, and show that you've done everything you possibly could to generate as much, well, saving your budgets the most you effectively can by each department, so you can come back and say, okay, now it's up to the taxpayers or this board to decide if they want to increase the taxes or find out some other funding source to fix roads. So is that a good political answer for you there?
Yeah, I just want to assure you, I'll ask the same question of the next guy, so...
No, I understand, and that's a really good question, and that's a really tough one to deal with, but I think it's going to have to be dealt with, decisions of what streets are going to get fixed or not get fixed, and all that that comes into play.
Just public disclosure, I'm hoping the feds pass the renewal of the highway funds and everything works out, but even then, it's still going to be a tough go.
Yeah, and I've listened to NDOT for years, that their stack meetings talk about how they're going to handle this, and they looked at those roads where they charge a fee to use parts of it, and they're looking at that, and they're looking at how, some other way to charge taxes to cover their costs, too. And there's some really tough decisions that are going to come.
Washoe County's gas tax just went up four cents because of their indexing, and it's not fun.
Morning, Mark.
Good morning.
Kind of somewhat along the same lines as John. If you're elected to this position, in what respect would you focus on the most on serving on this board? Where do you think you can make a difference on bringing issues to the board and to the community? Where would your focus be?
Well, I have a lot of interest, obviously, because some of my passion, the bicycle, pedestrian side, but I also have a lot of interest in roadway systems. I've spent years on the Tahoe, back since, well, I was up there since 83, and I've sat on committees since 83 at Lake Tahoe, trying to resolve issues just on Highway 28. And they finally seem to have their act together and kind of putting it all together with pedestrians and bicycles and all those things that that highway uses so much. So I have a lot of experience working on transportation issues. So I think I bring experience, but I also bring a desire to see pedestrian and bicycles part be a component of it. But I have to tell you, my advocacy ends there. It doesn't end saying that they should play a primary role. It's all about, they should be a part of the planning, and if the budget's there, it's there. If it's not, the roadway systems become a very important thing, and in certain areas of town, we have those discussions. So I bring a lot of experience, I think, a lot of experience on boards, a lot of experience with governments, knowing how that works with NDOT, how it works with collaboration in the Campos, like Campo, the, working with RTCs, working at the lake with the TTD a lot. So I bring a lot of that to this, and a desire to be active in this community still, leaving the Planning Commission. I hated not being involved at some level in this community, because I still, I'm a firm believer in those people who show up run the world. So I have always repeated that. And if you're not there, and sitting in the grandstands, I'd rather be there as one vote.
Thanks, Mark. Anything you want to add?
No, I just preach, this is a rare occasion for me to come back twice, so. I promised Patrick that I would come back.
Gotcha.
So I came back again, so I thank you for this one more opportunity to give it a shot.
Thanks, Mark.
You bet.
All right.
The next applicant will be Michael Reynolds.
Good morning, Michael. How are you doing this morning?
Good, how are you, sir?
Doing all right. I see you brought some support back there, right?
Yep.
Okay. For the record, this is Michael Reynolds, and I think the city manager told you what we do, we kind of ask the same questions. And my question that, is, you know, kind of give us a thought, give me a thumbnail of, you know, why you want to do this, and what your interests are in it. And I'd also like, when you're talking about that, tell me what a mobility manager does.
Okay. I can do that. My background was in the military, retired military, and as such, I had to move battalion, brigade-level assets by land, sea, rail, and air. And that was a very interesting aspect of the job. And I was recently hired as the brand-new, still under warranty, mobility manager for RSVP. When I ascended to that job, I looked at the issues that are facing Carson City. And with transportation, there are many. The two that I identified that I could address immediately were mobility for the seniors, older adults, that are increasing, that population's increasing here in Carson City, and of course, primarily, safety. Now, I looked at those issues, and we had a saying in the military, if it was important enough to do, it was important enough to train. So I organized a training session, a mobility manager training session, right here in beautiful downtown Carson City. And that was with the National Transportation Institute. So we had delegates from RTC Southern, RTC Washoe, Campo here in Carson City, and the Metropolitan Planning Organization at Tahoe. We also had representatives from NDOT and several others from around the area. Thirty-two occupants. And at that session, it was a two-day intensive training session, by the way, which was free for us, we addressed those types of issues and how a mobility manager can address those issues. A mobility manager looks at all available transportation assets, looks for alternative transportation assets, and tries to partner those up so that we can increase all transportation, not only for seniors, but for all the population. I started out in that process by partnering with some of the immediate areas with RTC here. I had an introduction with Patrick Pittenger and Graham Dollarhide and all the NDOT personnel, and explained to them what I had in mind, and then I started off with a few initiatives. The first one, I don't want to make this too lengthy, I know you, the first one was with Silver State Trailways. They had contacted RSVP for our support, and I had a series of meetings with them, and I said, a bus line through the I-95 corridor would address many of the senior issues for transportation that are out there, and we'd like to support you, but we'd also like concessions, concessions in the form of vouchers, discounts for veterans, and so on. Also, some service routes, service routes that would address, say, the VA hospital, which they paid attention to. And that has started. They have buses that come all the way from Parham to Vegas, to Parham, and up the I-95 corridor, and then on here to Carson, and then on to Reno. Now, I'm not saying, I mean, that would have been done anyway, I'm sure, but our input helped us service the populations that I wanted to service. Now, the problem with those rural transportation processes, as I've learned as at RSVP, is we have a lot of seniors that they retire from their jobs, and they have little income. So what they do is they seek out rural areas that have cheap land or cheap rent. And they go out to those areas. And then, as they process, get a little older, then they get sick. Well, they need to get to medical facilities. And that becomes a challenge in our rural areas. And there are several that are identified as a big issue. So I hope as an RSVP manager that I can address those issues and improve those. One of them that I'm really excited about is Intellhealth. How many have you heard of Intellhealth? Okay? Intellhealth is a program that was started four years ago by the VA, and it's been immensely successful. And it is a program where a veteran, and not only a veteran, but a non-veteran, too, can go into a facility, whether it be a rural health clinic or a VA facility, and get on a Skype-on-steroids program, where they can actually talk to a doctor on a large screen. Eighty percent of the time, that will take care of their appointment, because they're assisted by a nurse or a social worker. Now, that, as an RSVP mobility manager, I think I can make the biggest impact with that program alone. So I'm preparing a grant for that program. I also am preparing a technical assistance grant, where they'll come down and they'll give us the time and resources to survey all of northern Nevada. Our southern mobility manager is going to survey all of southern Nevada, and our Tahoe Transportation District mobility manager will take west Nevada and east California. So those are the initiatives I'm working on right now.
Okay, very good. Want to start? Jim?
Good morning. Pretty much answered my question, but if you were selected to serve on this commission, what would be your focus, was my question to the other candidate.
The third issue that I've recognized is the infrastructure here in Nevada. I came here from California, and my initial impression was, boy, this is great. The roads aren't congested, very seldom did I get obscene gestures. It, I mean, I thought, I thought it was great, you know, especially with our new highway that goes into Reno. But according to the study that I've done initially, is there are some severe issues about the infrastructure here in Nevada, about roads, bridges, and water. So I hope to gain an insight into that, hopefully that that'll help me with my mobility management process. Also, to keep my ear on the transportation issues here in Carson City.
We currently spend $900,000 a year on basic maintenance. Roads were 1.4 million short. Congress has not renewed the federal highway funding, and we don't know if they will within the next month or so. If they do, then all money dries up. What would you cut?
Now, that's a tough question, sir. I would have to, I would have to recognize unmet demands, and through a process of communicating with the citizens that are actually going to use that service, I would have to prioritize based on that. And, you know, somebody's not going to be happy. But it's, I mean, there are alternatives way, alternative ways. I think some, one, I remember reading about National Congress of Legislators, about how they were going to assess taxes differently, because they're losing so much tax revenue from reduced driving because of the cost of gas. That might be one creative way. The answer to that question is, I would have to be part of that process, but I couldn't answer that at this point.
Good morning, Michael. Can you give us your views on pedestrian and bike pathways as part of our regional transportation plan and our Complete Streets programming?
Pedestrian and bike pathways are extremely important. As we have reduced, I mean, we've increased, Carson City has increased its ridership, according to the figures that I've, well, they still want to get around. And so you kind of kill two birds with one stone. If you don't drive the vehicle, then you can get on a good bicycle, and we have pathways right here in Carson City, because I've ridden around them myself a lot. But then they're exposed to a lot of traffic hazards. So I think to address that issue is to encourage it, the RTC does a bike ride every year, as I recall, and to do outreach on how to ride safely. For instance, vests, the blinkers on the back of the bike, and things that will make you safe on a bicycle. So it's an important area, and it's an increasing area, because people... And, you know, somebody's not going to be happy. But it's... and in their alternatives way, alternative ways, I think some... One, I remember reading about National Congress of Legislators about how they were going to assess taxes differently because they're losing so much tax revenue from reduced driving because of the cost of gas. That might be one creative way. The answer to that question is, I would have to be part of that process, but I couldn't answer that at this point.
Good morning, Michael. Can you give us your views on pedestrian and bike pathways as part of our regional transportation plan and our complete streets programming?
Pedestrian and bike pathways are extremely important. As we have reduced... I mean, we've increased... Carson City has increased its ridership, according to the figures that I've went... while they still want to get around. And so you kind of kill two birds with one stone. If you don't drive the vehicle, then you can get on a good bicycle, and we have pathways right here in Carson City because I've ridden around them myself a lot. But then they're exposed to a lot of traffic hazards. So I think to address that issue is to encourage it... the RTC does a bike ride every year, as I recall, and to do outreach on how to ride safely. For instance, vests, the blinkers on the back of the bike, and things that will make you safe on a bicycle. So it's an important area, and it's an increasing area because people, because of the cost of gas, are looking for alternative methods to get around. And you get in better shape.
Hi. RTC recently adopted the Complete Streets policy, as Brad mentioned, and it acknowledged a public art component. Since your job on the committee is to allocate streets funding, with this policy in mind, would you see a public art component funded? And if so, what percentage?
Public... an explanation on that, public...
Public art would be... it could be something like creative bike racks in a location. It could be in our corridor projects. There are stipulations for public art locations, and it could be completing the history and motion that you see on the freeways right now. It could take on a variety of different formats.
I would support a significant percentage, as long as it included shelters. One of the things I've recognized is shelters for the Jump Around Carson system. That, I think, is wholly lacking because Jump Around Carson is a good bus system. I have one of their passes in my pocket right now as a senior. But if you look at those stops, you know, aside from the RTC transfer point, there's no place for them to sit. I mean, it's just, they're right out there in the open. So that's one project that I would really think would receive some significant funding. The rest of it could be prioritized based on, once again, unmet demands and what the citizens of Carson City really want.
Michael, anything you want to add? Any concluding comments, questions, or just statements?
Yes.
You don't have to, but go ahead.
You should choose me over the other candidate.
Said like a good Army veteran, and that's fine. That's good. That's good. Well said. All right. All right. Well, you're welcome to... now, the hard part comes for us. You're welcome to sit and listen, the other candidates here, so welcome to sit and listen. These are the most difficult decisions we have to make. And, you know, let us, I think on behalf of the entire board, we want to thank both of you for, you know, applying for an application to help, you know, do things that help move your city forward. And if we pick one or the other, we don't want you to believe that, you know, we're downgrading the other one. I mean, because the fact that you're applying and helping us move forward is what's important, and at least in my mind, so I want to appreciate that. So you're welcome to sit and listen, and we'll see where we go, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Michael. All right. All right. Want to go?
All right. According to my scoring system, Mark has a slight edge.
All right. Anybody want to weigh in there? Karen, you want to weigh in? Okay, go.
I wanted to go with the "and" that is in our action sheet and select both. But I do feel that Mark's experience with trails and with all of that aspect, and considering the corridor projects and all of that, that will be encompassed, that he's a very important component to that. So my vote is for Mark.
Jim?
Well, unfortunately, the commission only allows a five-member, and it's unfortunate because you get a lot of candidates in here who are both equally qualified, and my selection at this time is Mark.
Sure. Yeah, and I'd like to just say, you know what, I... Mike, I... The votes are there. I just want to say, you know, Michael, it seems to me that, you know, your talents are valuable, whether you're on the RTC or where you are right now, because when I listen to what you said, I mean, you are the linchpin as to, you know, what we're trying to do for senior mobility around here. So I think that, you know, you can be just as effective in the position you are now as to being on the RTC, and I would encourage you to continue to do that. So we'll entertain a motion to appoint Mark Kimb... Michael, Mark Kimbrough as the next member.
I move to appoint Mark Kimbrough to the Carson City Regional Transportation Commission for an unexpired term that expires December 31st, 2014.
Second.
Motion by supervisor Aboubacar, second by... no, a motion by supervisor McCauskey, second by supervisor Aboubacar on the motion discussion. Hearing none, there really is no discussion on these, in any way. All in favor, single by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, aye. Karen, you now, thanks very much. Thanks to both of you guys, okay? All right. We'll now move to item number 24, Board of Supervisors, non-action items. Let me say here, we have a new item on here. It's called Future Agenda Items. This... I've asked Nick, and I think there are other people who've asked Nick to put this on the agenda, as a result of my comments at the last agenda with respect to how we create agenda items. And what my concern is, is that we have the ability to staff ideas that come up so that we can all make informed decisions. So what I would... I've had this on here for future agenda items so that we can get a sense of the board as to whether this is something that the board wants to go forward with, and if... you're certainly welcome to talk to the city manager about ideas that you want to have brought forward, and he can get a sense of whether it's something that the board wants and whether he has the requisite wherewithal to staff the issue. And if either one of those work, there are times where you can do it right now, where you can make a motion that says that you've been unable to convince anybody, so it's another chance to do that, and you could also do it under public comment if you wanted to do that. So I know that the district attorney has weighed in here. What did I do wrong?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is an item that you will be tempted to deliberate, and I would recommend that you resist the opportunity to bust in and everyone decide whether this is an agenda item we want to go forward with. I would recommend that whoever has an idea for an agenda item to make their case, and it's certainly okay for an occasional comment from another board member. But I think essentially what would have to happen is they would have to have discussions later privately about their agenda item.
I think that's what it... I'm just trying to find some organization here where we get staff properly on so we can make informed decisions on things. And that's... it's not trying to shut off anybody's right to come to the... to do it, but I mean, at the end of the day, you know, we do have an obligation to hopefully make informed decisions based on the information that's presented to us. And sometimes that takes... most of the time, it takes staff time to do that, so that's where that is. So I appreciate your admonition, and I know that the board appreciates that as well. Supervisor McCauskey?
The Parks and Recreation Commission, at its meeting on Tuesday, approved renaming the Pony Express Pavilion, the Marv Tech Sarah Pony Express Pavilion. I would like to see that brought to this board next meeting or the meeting after at the latest so we can get this done sometime before the Boys and Girls Club has their annual meeting there.
I just want to... maybe a clarification. I know I've had discussion with staff and with members of the board. At this juncture, this item number, Future Agenda Items, it's not necessarily that you need to... or I'm asking for a better direction, maybe, that if any board member in the future would like to have an agenda item, does he need first to do this, bring it up here in public, or does he still have the option of drafting an agenda item and presenting it? Is there a limit to that? Or I just want a clarification, if I may.
The clarification is, I think you bring that up privately with the city manager, and he can make that decision, and the agenda is really decided upon by the city manager and me as the last resort. So you can bring it up privately with the city manager, as I said, that if you don't get past that juncture, then, you know, you're welcome to bring it up here to see if there's any sense. But, you know, absent that, you know, what I would suggest is that the only thing you should... what I suggest is you just make your comments during either public comment or now, and it either goes or doesn't. But we have to operate as a five-member board, and it's not the board... you know, we're not here for one member or two members. We're here as a board. So maybe that clarifies it, Jim. Try it first with the city manager, and if it doesn't get there, then we'll use the public comment to see where we go.
But it's still not restricting a board member from moving forward with an agenda item, even though they may not have the support... and I'm not saying any board member would move forward if they don't get the support of city staff or have a feeling that the agenda item that they are trying to present would not move forward. So I mean, we still, as elected official, can still move forward even after a discussion with the city manager or even a presentation here. We can still move forward if that board member is so elected to or desired to.
Well, I think that answer has been answered in the city manager contract, and I would encourage everybody to take a look at the contract language. It says that, you know, if you run into an impasse like that, we'll put it up on the... the city manager can bring it, bring an agenda item as to whether or not we want to bring this as an agenda item and staff it. That's what the city manager contract says, so we can do it like that. I mean, that's a last resort if you want to do it like that. I mean, but that'll tee that up.
I wasn't trying to make it last resort or anything. I'm just trying to zero in that we... I know we work as a board, five members, but we're solely elected independently of each other, and I still want to have the opportunity to at least present agenda items down the road and other members of this board when they are elected as well. I just would like to reserve the opportunity to have agenda items in the future. That's all I was saying. I'm not trying to get in an argument or be confrontational.
Anybody else? Further... anything further? Any other matters to come before us on this item? Marina?
Not on this item, I'm sorry, but before you're done.
We're about done.
Okay.
We're not done until tonight, but...
Well, okay. Just non-action item, another non-action item, nothing to do with agendas. Okay. Fair, of course. I want to give you a quick update on the fair, which is going amazingly well. As you most likely have heard, we have parking figured out. It will be at the Casino Fandango, and they have generously offered their parking spots. And the nice part is, is on the Jack route. So Jack Route number three, and I know Patrick's probably already left by now, but it will be no charge during the time of the fair so that we're able to shuttle people from Fandango over to the fair. So that, what we're very excited about. Our entries, I don't have the exact number, but they're high, especially for a first-time show. We have... and the total entries are several hundred, and that includes both animals and things that you would do, like paintings and that type of thing. And the actual animals... all the actual animals are over 100. So we're very pleased with that. And you are all invited to the ribbon cutting July 31st at 11:00 a.m. And that being said, the mayor really lucks out because he gets to be one of the ones in the Wells Fargo stagecoach that's going to come in, and that will be... he will be joined with the governor with an executive from Wells Fargo, and Senator Van Keek will also be there. So we will have at the ribbon cutting, very excited about it. We will have a color guard. I'm not sure exactly which one yet, but it'll either be of our own department between Sheriff and Fire, or perhaps from the high school ROTC. We're kind of confirming which one will be there. And John Tyson will be singing the National Anthem. And so we do have a pretty big to-do with it. And so anyway, please know you're all invited. We hope you can be there. The Brewery Arts Center, if you get a chance to go to their website, the summer of events, they have posted the schedule of... and it is a very busy... you'll see that... and all these events are in... these type of events, like Brewery Arts Center is... that you'll see on their schedule, are all included to the participants of the fair at no extra charge. The only extra charge will be the concert Friday night with the Comstock Cowboys, and then the Ranch Rodeo Saturday and Sunday. And those tickets are now also available online through the NV150Fair.com website. So I just want to give you that quick update, and if you have any questions about it. Otherwise, I hope you all have got that marked down.
It's marked down. Brad, go.
We're moving into our new office on July 31st, so unfortunately, I missed the ribbon cutting. However, going back to the Jack system, do you know how often the bus will cycle through there? Is it every 15 minutes, every 20 minutes?
Yes. In fact, it's going to ramp up depending on the timing of the day. They're going to start at 8:00 a.m., and those, I believe... oh, good, Patrick, he's saving me. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Come right on up to the podium, Patrick. I'm giving them just an informational-only report on the fair, and if you could address the frequency of the Jack bus on...
Oh, certainly. So Patrick Pittenger, Transportation Manager, Carson City Public Works. We have worked out, as I'm sure you've covered, a parking arrangement with the Casino Fandango, which we are very appreciative of. I met with them again yesterday, and they're going to have ample parking, not only in their structure, but also in surface lots by the casino and at the... on Curry Street, south end of the movie theater, and that dirt lot that's just to the south of the movie theater. Parking spaces is going to be prepared by Public Works staff to take hundreds of cars, so we'll be in good shape. The route for the bus, the ones that are dedicated to the service of the fair, will go... there'll only be three stops, one at the Casino Fandango front door, one on Curry, back by the parking near the movie theater, and the third stop will be the fair. So it'll be very simple. We are working out the final details. It is actually on Route 3 of the Jack bus system, which will run normally, and anyone can... will be able to ride Route 3, which does travel between those two points, but it's only once an hour, so we will be augmenting it with additional vehicles, a variety of vehicles, a couple that are owned by the city that will be, you know, driven by licensed drivers, but they're not actually Jack buses anymore. We'll also be using regular Jack buses. We expect to always have at least two vehicles in service. We can ramp it up to as many as five as necessary. We'll plan to have more in the evening. We're not going to have a set schedule where, you know, it'll be exactly every 10 minutes, but because they're only about a mile apart, and we'll have two vehicles on, we expect to... at least two vehicles on, we'll expect to have a very good service, frequent service back and forth between the two. So we don't think there'll be any significant waiting required, and we do expect that we'll be able to be flexible as far as adding or subtracting vehicles of various sizes to accommodate the demand.
And Patrick, for those that want to ride their bikes down there, will there be bike parking areas or bike racks?
Let me see if I can answer that. We are the MDOT and the bike... what's her...
Musclepower?
What's Bill Storey called?
Oh, Bill Storey, yeah. But Bill Storey is the state bicycle and pedestrian coordinator.
Okay, they're having a booth there, and my understanding, I'm going to double-check with him, because I just got another inquiry. I believe they're going to be doing a bike valet, so that you can bike there and then have a valet parking for your bikes so that we have it secured and watched while you're enjoying the fair. So... but they'll be verified, and we'll do those kind of updates to the website.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Do you think the... I know, it's great that Fandango gave up the parking. Do you think that'll be adequate parking? Do you have an idea of how many stalls that'll... parking spaces you will have?
We were out at the site yesterday. We think, I know it said in the paper this morning, at least 700. We think it's... it'll be... we think it'll be more than 800, and we do believe it'll be adequate. We do expect that some attendees will find, you know, other solutions to park, you know, whatever they may be. It won't be 100% of the parking, but yeah, we do believe it'll be adequate because we will have some turnover, of course. Different fair activities going on different times of the day, people coming and going, which we totally expect. And we've worked with Susan Taylor, the fair... the professional fair manager, and we think we're in good shape.
Just out of curiosity, you think Walmart would allow parking in their parking lot? I'm sure you probably asked them, too, but...
I did have one conversation with them, so that they are aware of what's going on, but I also said that we're guiding people to, you know, to a different location. So while there's nothing formal being prepared for them like there is for Costco, we won't be surprised if some folks decide to utilize that. There will be... it will obviously be a walk, and there's not a direct walk because there's down the hill there, but there will be sidewalks down Vista Grande here very shortly that would allow a person to walk down the back of Vista Grande without being in the street.
Anything else? Any further updates? Nick, got anything? You okay?
No, sir.
All right. Are we ready to stand in recess until 5:30 tonight?
I just want to make a comment.
Question, go.
The Greenhouse Project Benefit Concert is next Wednesday, July 9th, and to address parking, so that people know, there's handicap parking that's available adjacent to... or at the dentist's office that's adjacent to LA Bakery. And additional parking is at the end of John Street in the old hospital parking lot.
Very good. Anything else? All right. Then if there's nothing else, we'll stand in recess until 5:30 tonight here in this room. Thank you. And we'll take up the medical marijuana issues.